Member Castellanos, absent.
Today on the agenda, we have a licensing agreement for early college high school and North Shore Community College. Dr. Tell Wilder, would you like to speak?
Speak to it? We'd be glad to. So first, just a note of, or expression of appreciation to all the folks who have been working really hard to make this first-time experience in the state of Massachusetts come true for 100 students beginning this fall. Dr. Gardner, on our side, in partnership with Deb Reggiro and Bill Heineman and his team at North Shore have just been a real joy to work with, and we are getting to the final stages of our planning and ready to push forward. That includes a licensing agreement. And in your packet, there were three separate documents that I'm happy to walk you through and talk you through. The first was really more for informational purposes. That's the memorandum of understanding. I think the best way to sort of approach and understand this is to think of it as nine months of planning and discussion around the early college high school experience. And this MOU is everything from, you know, the spaces that will be used, who is responsible for what, how students' credits will be calculated. The program for the first year is all spelled out in, you know, pretty high detail in this memorandum of understanding. We just wanted to be sure to share that with you so that you can get a sense for where we stand. So it does, the watermark does read sample. I probably would have put draft because it is not quite done, but we are, we are very, very close to tidying this up. But this, this should indicate to you the depth of the discussions, the attention to detail, and the fact that we are just about there in terms of the planning. The business before the Buildings and Ground Subcommittee has to do with the licensing agreement, which in other terms might be seen as a lease. But what it does is spell out really clearly the spaces that the Lynn Public Schools will be occupying or using onsite at North Shore Community College, and the general costs associated, not just with those spaces, but also with the services that the college will be providing us. If you, I don't know if you've gotten a chance to look at this document here with the cost analysis, I think that's the easiest one to sort of navigate to understand the specifics of what is proposed. Essentially, we will occupy just under 5,000 square feet. They're modular building, an office suite, and then some additional classrooms in, on their main campus. And then the services that will be provided to us, security, internet or IT support, custodial, all of that is wrapped into what is proposed in this licensing agreement. And so these are all spaces that we have toured, both with the educators. I think even the union has gone to sort of lay eyes on this space. We've gone over with Orrin Wright also to make sure that everything is on the up and up in terms of safety and security. And what you see in this document really represents the substance of all of those conversations. And a fee, the fee is not small. It's a little more than $180,000 for the year. But if you think of it in terms of, you know, either previous agreements that we've had for either much smaller space, far fewer services, this tends to fall right in line in terms of proportional cost. I should also note that the very first person that I forwarded this to upon receipt was a gentleman seated to my right. For his review and approval, he has, there was one adjustment that we made around the parties, the amount of time that needs to be given if we decide that we don't want to do this anymore, and they accommodated that adjustment. So it has been given the legal green light. And then the second is our school business administrator cannot be here this evening to confirm that we can, in fact, afford this. And it is his plan to draw down on ESSER funds to pay for this in the first year. And then the school committee in partnership with the administration can decide how they want to fund subsequent years.
Any questions? Mrs. Coppola?
Okay. I noticed in, in the memorandum of understanding, it has Lynn English Classical, but is it still just open to Lynn English students?
At present, yep. And we're getting to a point where we might open it up to students who attend Pickering, who might go to Classical, or might go to English and the Discovery Academy, just to fill the remaining seats. But it, English is really the focus of the school.
Okay. And what is the per pupil that we spend within the Lynn Public Schools?
I think it's a little more than $16,000.
Okay. So this-
I would need Kevin here to confirm that for me, but I believe that's what it is.
If I add it from the budget, you know, the 1.1 million 171 in this, it really comes to 13,693. So we're under what it would cost us within-
I'm not sure I follow.
I'm, I'm just, was figuring the per pupil cost. So I took what, I took the 197,000, like the almost 200,000 given to North Shore, and then in our budget, the 1,171,000, and then divided by 100. Yeah, exactly. The staffing and all the rest of stuff. So, you know, with, cost-wise, it's within a good amount.
Yeah, I would, I'm sorry.
All right. Well, I just want to make one quick clarification. So that 197 or 192 number that you're looking at is actually going to change? That's going to go down to 181 and change? They originally wrote the agreement for a 12-month agreement and decided on an 11th month, 11-month, because we would occupy in the month of August. So it's slightly different. But yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that the additional money to get up to what is per pupil spending would be for like supplies, curriculum materials, things like that.
Yeah, I took those off of those two pages in the budget under early college. It has two pages in the budget.
Right. But that doesn't include like the curriculum materials?
Okay.
That, that's in the curriculum budget?
Okay.
So that difference will come from there.
Okay. And just one other question. So this does not, we, we cannot use it for net school spending, is what you're saying?
Lease space, I don't think is net school spending eligible.
There's no exception. The state consider an exception where they're encouraging us to start the program?
To do this, yeah. I mean, that is something that can be raised with the powers that be. But I think the general rule is that it, that it's not.
Yeah. And this has been an ongoing conversation that we have with the, with the delegation and with ESSY and with Mr. McHugh and Mr. Bertino. I think, I think it's a good point.
Okay. Yep. Okay. That's all I have.
Can you take the gavel so I can-
Oh, sure.
I interrupt her. So like a wide space tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
I have just a couple of questions, not a lot. I was looking at page three in the first document, letter E, Student Accountability Tracking. And I was just, usually mid-quarter reports and quarterly, but I don't know how are the students going to be, you know, the period that they get graded.
It is exactly the same. So both the day-to-day schedule, the calendar, school calendar is precisely the same for students at English and Classical.
Okay. So they'll be getting a quarterly report card and-
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I was a little confused. What is F E R P A, FERPA?
So that stands for Federal Education Right to Privacy Act. It is the rule that requires that schools protect student privacy in their day-to-day operations. So, you know, we don't share student information publicly. But, but you do raise a good point because we're going to be working with a university, and so there has to be sort of a, you know, a balancing act around what kind of information gets shared with university personnel.
Okay. And then as I was going through this packet, I noticed like in section one, page seven, but I think you cleared it up, you had us, it had us going from 8-1, 2022 to 7-31, 23. But then on page three of the second part, it says 8-1, 2022 to 6-30, 20, 11 months. So that was my next question. So I think you answered it already.
Yeah, yeah, 8-1.
So it's 11 months?
Correct. Disagreement. And then, you know, as I mentioned in the outset, the MOU reflects many, like probably at this point, hundreds of hours of conversation and meeting in small groups and really sort of research, plowing through the details. We really want this to be an organic situation. So we're gonna, we've planned for this year. We will launch it, and then we'll begin, begin planning for year two. And so there'll be another MOU coming for the following year.
And so the timeframe will be the same in part one and part two, or is it going to be a year and then 11 months? If you know what I'm saying?
That would be a, I, I don't know.
I just wanted to be consistent so that this document is going to say, we're going to have 11 months, or this document is going to say it's 12 months?
I think 11 months, 12 months is, is, you know, forgive the description, but, but small potatoes. I think, you know, the key is for us to get to a point with our planning and, and, you know, what the shape of year two is going to look like. Spring into, I mean, I, I, I'm guessing. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right. Okay. Mayor Nicholson?
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to say something quickly, just to thank the administration, Dr. Tell Wilder, Dr. Gardner, and North Shore Community College. It's just so exciting to see this all in black and white. It's, it's a, really a thrilling innovation. You know, we were already leaders on this, and to see this take off like this so, you know, organizing so quickly, I think is just astonishing in the way this is turned around. And I think really sort of showcases a couple of the values we've talked about the Lynn Public Schools' values around collaborative relationships and the support we've gotten from North Shore, the, the different levels of, you know, from the teachers involved in the guidance counselors and recruiting, to the principals and administrators that are, that are standing this up, and then inspiring lifelong learning. I mean, I think that the, getting Lynn students on a college campus, earning college credits while they're Lynn students is an incredible innovation. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
I agree too.
Is it one motion, or is, are there two? Because I noticed there's signatures for two of the documents. So what, what are we voting on? What are we moving forward today?
I, I would recommend that you do two, a motion in support of the memorandum of agreement because there is mention of the licensing information in there, and then the licensing agreement as well. And if there's any concern about the memorandum, much of what has been presented by Dr. Gardner in her two presentations on the early college program is represented in that MOU.
And I'd like to make a motion, two motions actually. The first one will be to move forward the Lynn Early College High School Memorandum of Understanding between North Shore Community College and Lynn Public Schools, and move it forward to the full committee.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Castellanos, absent?
And the next one will be a revocable license for the temporary use of college property made in the form of a motion and moved to the full committee.
Second.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Castellanos, absent?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Castellanos, absent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present. All please rise for a suit to the flag, followed by a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to recognize our in memoriam Florence Dussette, retired clerk, as of July 1st, 2022. Beth Stanley, retired paraprofessional, July 2nd, 2022. Lenny Moreland, retired clerk, July 3rd, 2022. And William Bill McGinnis, retired teacher, July 5th, 2022. Thank you. For signing the agenda is the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Policy Subcommittee meeting on June 23rd, 2022, the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting on June 23rd, 2022, Personnel Subcommittee meeting on June 23rd, 2022, six special meeting on June 23rd, 2022, Building and Ground Subcommittee meeting on July 7th, 2022, and the seventh special meeting on July 7th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next item is a request to accept a donation of various equipment items approximately valued at $4,350 to the Health Assisting Program from teacher Richard Frank.
Your support would be greatly appreciated. Much-needed equipment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a request to transfer the School Resource Officer funding in the budget to hire an additional- All right. There's a couple more donations. Request to accept a donation of $2,500 from the Fair Share Ballot Question Campaign to Harrington Elementary School.
The Harrington Hornets would greatly appreciate it. I support it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request to accept a donation of $25,000 from Amazon to Marshall Middle School from the Amazon Future Engineer Teacher of the Year Award Program.
Quickly, you'll recall that Mr. Tran won that award, brought incredible pride to the district. It came with a lot of recognition, which he deserves, but also a $25,000 donation to Marshall Middle.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meek, if we can just make sure that the donors are thanked.
Absolutely, yeah. Please make sure we thank the donors. Thank you. A request to transfer the School Resource Officer funding in the budget to hire an additional vice principal at Classical and English.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So earlier this week, I sent you a memo. I don't see it in the packet here, but I, thank you. In my packet anyway. So in our FY23 budget, we were excited to include the opportunity to reestablish the SRO program at Lynn Classical and Lynn English. At the time, you know, maybe late winter, the chief was of a belief that they would be able to accommodate that going into the '22, '23 school year. Circumstances have changed, and that is no longer possible. These things happen. And so instead of, you know, leaving that in that line, we would prefer to effectuate a plan that the two principals, English Classical, presented this year, which we're planning on doing for FY24. We would rather do it this year. And that involves the addition of one vice principal at each school. I outlined in the memo to you the immediate benefits of doing so. One, big one, would be the ability to create grade-level support teams, inclusive of a guidance counselor, a school counselor, social workers, who would be led by a grade-level vice principal, because now each school would have four. There's also additional benefits around supervision and evaluation support for teachers in the classroom. And we also, I mean, there's always a, you know, a wonderful benefit around family relationships. And with that additional vice principal, it's just a greater opportunity to deepen relationships with families. And so seeking the school committee's support in making that adjustment to the budget for the upcoming school year.
Make the motion, request to transfer the SRO funding in the budget.
You can get the motion on the table.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. You can do the motion then.
Funding in the budget to hire an additional vice principal at Classical and English.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion, Member Magnolia, then Member Gaitley.
So I'm just curious about what happens to that SRO funding in the '23, '24 budget if what we're doing is re-tasking in this one, because you were planning for that, for that next budget, will it sort of, yeah, just show up again, hoping that the staffing levels can then make that happen?
Correct. Correct. Had, have had that conversation with the chief, including our team, and that would be the plan to go, to try to reestablish that for next year.
Got it.
The '23, '24 year.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Member Gaitley?
So, piggybacking on Dr. Magnolia, if that does happen, what happens to the vice principals? Do they stay in the buildings? So you would have four, one for each grade?
Mm-hmm.
And then you would have also the SRO?
Yeah. So, yes. I can say more if you want me to. I'm going to go ahead and do it. All right. Both schools requested vice principals this year, but we prioritized the re-establishment of the SROs because that was, you know, at the time, a possibility. And so, you know, you know the budget inside and out. You know, we proposed, but we really wanted to take advantage of that opportunity this year. And the suggestion to the principals was to make that proposal for the vice principals next year, building on top of the SROs. We're just switching it around. But the vice principals would stay.
I think it's a great idea.
Any other discussion?
No. You guys got the questions for me. Thank you.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Thank you. Next item is selection of a firm for the superintendent search. As we discussed last time, our next step was to look for a consultant to help us with our search for a permanent superintendent, and consulting with the city's purchasing agent, Tim Leonard, about the process. We solicited a certain number of quotes before making a decision. And so you received a packet of those proposals. And the, the purchasing department, along with Attorney Greenspan, based on procurement laws, has recommended that we should select the lowest bidder, which is the organization with which we have the prior experience anyway, which is the MAS C. So we are looking for a vote tonight to select them as a superintendent search firm. Member Gaitley?
I'd like to make a motion to hire the MAS Association of School Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. And I'll, I'll just say, in terms of next steps there, you, those of you who were here last time recall that the, one of the next steps as we get, start working with MAS C would be to put together a search committee. And so like last time, we'll ask and are now asking members to put forward names if they have suggestions of folks they'd like to see on that search committee. And we will work with MAS C to start putting that together. Member Coppola?
I received some calls from people in the community wondering how they would apply to sit on that search committee. Do you have a process?
We'll work with MAS C to, to set something-
Okay.
Yeah, up. But you can let them know that that's, that's coming.
Okay.
And the committee can start sort of thinking about who they'd like to put forward, if they'd like to put somebody forward. Thank you. Okay. Member Gaitley, ratification of any votes from the Building and Ground Subcommittee?
Yes, there were two motions made and approved to move to the full committee. And the first one was Lynn Early, MOU for the Lynn Early College High School Memorandum of Understanding between the North Shore Community College and Lynn Public Schools. Like to make a motion, or someone to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the Lynn Early College High School Memorandum of Understanding between North Shore Community College and Lynn Public Schools.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Abstain.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And then there was a second motion for the authority to enter into a license agreement for a revocable license for the temporary use of the college property.
Okay. Motion to accept the revocable license for the temporary use of college property.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Abstain.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. All right. Next items on the agenda are in executive session. If someone would like to make a motion and just read the purposes for which we'd be going into executive session.
I'd like to move that we go into executive session to approve executive session minutes from June 23rd, 2022, so that we can have contract negotiations with non-union personnel, so that we can have contract negotiations with non-unit personnel. There's a whole list. And then specific to Deb Reggiro, and to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to monitors, Teamsters Local 42, Nurses Local 31, 47A, and the Vice Principals Association. The discussion of these matters, which involves strategy in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining position of the public body.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Motion regarding a regular session?
So moved?
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. First action we took was to approve executive session minutes from June 23rd, 2022. So we'll committee.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. We approved contracts with the attached list to the minutes of the non-union personnel. It's the wall of the committee.
So motion to accept the attached list of minutes, non-union personnel.
Second.
Raises.
Raises, excuse me. Yes, thank you.
Second.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. We have four contracts to approve with two different unions for the, the raises. One-year deal with the monitors, Teamsters Local 42.
So move that contract?
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya, absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Three-year contract.
You want to, how you want to do this?
You want to, you want to start signing?
Doesn't matter. They can start after each. That's front and back. You can just sign and pass.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Absent.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And then a three-year contract with the Vice Principals Association.
So moved.
Second.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Absent.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next, a, uh, one-year contract with the Vice Principals Association.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos? Absent. Member Capola?
Yes.[1554.22]